And begin with our public hearing for item number 10.1, public hearing as established in the 2017 docket of comprehensive plan amendments, and I would invite staff forward to please brief.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Paula Reeves, Planning Manager. It's my honor to present the 2016-2036 Comprehensive Plan Update and Amendments that will bring Mason County into compliance with state law and restore eligibility for state infrastructure grants and loans. This plan represents the vision Mason County residents have for their county over the next 20 years. It's been written by the residents of Mason County, the citizen planners on your planning commission that I want to acknowledge quickly, Chair Thomas, other planning commissioners if you just want to, thank you, and stakeholders over the past three years. A lot of work by my predecessor Barb Atkins went into this plan, and I want to make sure and mention that, including development of the Public Participation Plan. In 2016, you adopted the Parks and Trails element and the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Both of these elements were completed with guidance and support of other Mason County advisory committees. Over the past three years, your planning commissioners have held over 40 public meetings and hearings and conducted a countywide public opinion survey in order to update this plan. The Planning Commission has also worked very hard to create an open forum where people can come to share and discuss any and all ideas. Planning staff have taken public comments through our website, email, over the phone, in person. We've posted public notices and sent mailings to property owners. We've held workshops called Coffee Talks to discuss with community groups various elements of the plan. The public engagement process for this plan has exceeded requirements both in our code and in state law. Mason County adopted its first comprehensive plan under the State Growth Management Act in 1996. The last time this plan was updated was 12 years ago, in 2005. A lot's changed over the last 12 years. And some of the primary changes that we've made include addressing errors, omissions, and inconsistencies, deleting outdated and inaccurate information and replacing it with current data on population, employment, housing, and transportation, revisiting text and policies to ensure internal consistency, providing consistency and terminology between the various elements of the plan, improving readability, clarifying the policies, objectives, and procedures, removing objectives that have been codified since the adoption of the 2005 plan, bringing our maps and current technology up to date, so that we have this new tool called the Planning Map Library that's queryable by your address. You type in your address. You can learn a lot of information about planning and building for your particular property. And last but not least, we've added a citizens guide that's 10 pages and gives a good overview of the plan, and we've added a rural element. The plan update supports and was coordinated with the plans of our special districts in Mason County, including PUDs, fire districts, school district, ports, and others. We work diligently to incorporate public comments, including comments we received during the process from our Squawson Island Tribal Nation. The plan update and the State Environmental Policy Act review were both transmitted to state agencies for comment on September 12, 2017. We received and addressed three comments each from Washington State Department of Commerce and Department of Transportation. Washington State Department of Commerce praised our Parks and Trails element, and they've advised adoption of the comprehensive plan update. They've also advised that we develop and implement a comprehensive water plan in 2018 with guidance from Department of Health, and this is on our work plan. Further, we received praise from Washington State Department of Ecology. They called Mason County "a model for integrating and adopting a shoreline master program and critical areas ordinance at the same time, maximizing our limited resources and our public involvement processes." The comprehensive plan before you also includes amendments or revisions to Mason County Code Title 6.68 Water Availability. These were recommended by our Planning Commission to address the public comments we've received. We've made these revisions to ensure water is both legally and actually available for permit-exempt wells, Group B, and two-party wells before approving building and subdivisions. Our processes are outlined in new guidelines implemented by the Community Services Division, and this is an interim procedure until we're able to complete a comprehensive water plan. Again, it's my honor to present the hard work of so many over the past three years, and I welcome your questions before moving into the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I read some of the comments from the tribes and so on. They revolved around water issues, and I was unable to see what the citizens might have said, what their concerns were. Can you give us kind of a general assessment of what the regular Brentwater citizens had suggested?
Right. I think there's a lot of concern that there may be impacts to housing prices and a general desire for predictability and process. And so that, in our interim solution, we're attempting to provide that predictability and do what we can in terms of innovative solutions to keep-
It's been amended many times towards a year ago.
Right. And again, the Department of Commerce has recommended adoption of our plan, which is the plan and the policies, and the development of a comprehensive water plan in 2018.
Okay. Any questions, any additional questions for staff? Okay. So, we will be having a series of hearings on the individual items on the docket. Our first hearing will be to consider, will be public hearings for citizen-initiated amendments, and the first item on there is a consideration of the Neal rezone request. And staff, are you going to brief the individual requests?
Sure, I can do that quickly. Sorry about that. The Neal rezone, Jeffrey and Stephanie Neal request removal of their parcel 123291300010, approximately one acre from the Belfair urban growth boundary, and rezone it to rural residential from residential R4. They own the parcel immediately adjacent to this parcel that is inside the Belfair urban growth area and would like to build on it. Concerns over feasibility of sewer connection in the vicinity of Irene Creek are cited as reasons for the urban growth boundary adjustment and rezone request.
Questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on the Neal rezone request. If a member of the public would like to make comment, please come to the podium, and the chair will recognize you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Neal, and I own the parcel in question, and I have a letter with a map attached. If I can pass that to you guys?
That should also be in your packets.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure. So, I'm here today to support the land use amendment that would remove our one acre parcel from the Belfair urban growth boundary and rezone it to rural residential RR5. The reason we are requesting the rezone is that the property will not support R4 development as it's zoned currently. As you can see in the attached map, when the Belfair urban growth boundaries were drawn, Irene Creek was not shown on Mason County's maps or GIS layers. The attached map is from the Mason County GIS staff, and it shows Irene Creek cutting through the parcel. This is a fish-bearing stream and an important tributary to the Union River. The entire parcel is also within the critical aquifer recharge area. We believe an error was made when the parcel was originally designated as urban growth R4 because the county didn't have all the information they needed. They didn't have Irene Creek on the map. And RR5 zoning would more closely match the characteristics of our parcel and would not interfere with the goal to encourage development in urban areas to the south of us. We're bordered on three sides by RR5, which is also clear on that map, and on the fourth side to the east across Obafur Highway, the parcels are zoned as R4, but there's a large wetland there that would prevent development on that side. In fact, one of the parcels on that side is owned by the Great Peninsula Conservancy, and it will remain as undeveloped natural habitat in perpetuity. It was bought as mitigation for one of the other Belfair development projects. And so, we also included at the, in that packet, a letter from the Great Peninsula Conservancy in support of this rezone.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the Neal rezone request? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and move to Commissioner discussion and a possible motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'd like to have some discussion on this. I am not in favor of this rezone. I concur with the staff's assessment that to divide the urban growth boundary along an urban arterial does not meet the intent of growth management or of urban development. I think as we, we, I did not agree with removing the Davis Farm when that was done, but I was not on the commission. To further bifurcate our urban growth area along a very major urban arterial, I think does not meet the intent of urban planning. I think it makes it more difficult to see an urban area grow the way we intend urban areas to grow. I do not concur with the assessment that this is a mapping error, or this was an error. And so, I would be not in favor of this rezone.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Yeah, I will be speaking in favor of the rezone for several different reasons. One, the hard work that was put forward by our planning commission, but two, just knowing the area and knowing that the creek that we have to try and put the sewer over doesn't seem very realistic with that particular parcel. We had rezoned another one just by it for the same reason that we're looking at this one here, and nothing has changed in my reasoning from when we were looking at the other one when I was on the planning commission.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the removal of parcel number 12329-13-00010 from the Belfair urban growth boundary and rezone it to rural residential RR5 from rural residential R4.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Neal rezone as presented and stated in the motion. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And the motion carries. Move on to item number two. This is a consideration of the Patton rezone request.
The Patton rezone, James Patton, Puget Sound Evergreen, following a boundary line adjustment to the parcel number 123201093290. This request is for a rezone of approximately 2.24 acres from medium-density residential RR5 to general commercial and business industrial, GC-BI. The business, Puget Sound Evergreen, owned and operated by James Patton, has been illegal nonconforming uses since Belfair zoning was established in 1998 and in business for over 20 years. This rezone complies with Mason County Code 8.52, that's our resource ordinance, stating that all legal nonconforming uses shall be encouraged to convert to conforming uses whenever possible. It received a due pass recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay, very good. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open the public comment period. If a member of the public would like to come forward, please do so, and the chair will recognize you. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period on item number two, and I will move to Commissioner discussion and a possible motion.
For exactly the same reason I'm in favor of this rezone, in that it does support a current use. I think that when, as we continue to have nonconforming uses of commercial entities, especially this close to the urban growth area, it makes it more difficult for fin, to get financing, to be certain about the success and future of your business, and I believe that this would very much meet our intent of urban planning in Belfair.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
I also be speaking in favor of it for the same reason just presented, on this parcel.
Very good. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the rezone of parcel number 12320-10-93290 to rezone this 2.24 acres to media, to, from medium-density residential RR5 to general commercial and business industrial, GC-BI.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Patton rezone request as presented and as stated in the motion. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. And item number three, we are considering revisions to the Belfair urban growth area development regulations?
The proposed Belfair development regulation submitted at citizen request revise Belfair urban growth area development regulations only, Mason County Code 17.20 through 17.35, consistent with best management practices for stormwater, current national transportation standards, and other best practices, all consistent with goals, policies, and objectives of Mason County Comprehensive Plan and provisions of the Washington State Growth Management Act. This received a due pass recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And then I believe we have amendments.
Yes. Commissioners, I am presenting a proposed amendments to the Belfair UGA regulations that were submitted to us and reviewed by the Planning Commission. I tried to make as many as available as I could at the sign-in podium. I apologize if you don't have one in the audience.
I have an extra copy.
The, when growth management was passed, we lost a very valuable and very desired housing product, and that was a house on one acre. The Growth Management Haring Board had established a bright line in the rural areas of no dense, no denser than one house per five acres, and then our Belfair zoning in the R4, Residential 4, and Residential 5 have a minimum density of at least four or, and the proposed changes are, or five units per acre. Normally, in zoning, in normal zoning, you would have a maximum density to control how dense things are, but the minimum density precludes anybody from having this one very desired housing product of one house per acre. If we can't do it in the rural areas, then I think we ought to make it available somewhere in Mason County to respond to the market demand. And so, I'm requesting changes in the language that would remove a minimum density in the R4 and RR5 zoning districts of Belfair. I believe that this does meet one of our planning policies, countywide planning policies, Policy 4.1, which is in the Housing section, that among other things says that we would promote a variety of residential densities. And so, I believe it meets our countywide planning policies. I think it meets a market demand need, and just as a anecdote, I know that there are lands in the RR5 zone that have such topographical issues that you can't get more than one house on that, on an acre. So, you're now asking folks to just abandon the ability to develop a piece of property just based on topography within an area that's supposed to have high density or some sort of building in it. So, I'm proposing these amendments, but I have additional changes I'd like you to consider just for more clarification. Under 17.03, .030, item B, the first sentence, if you could add the word "per" in front of the word "gross," so that the sentence would read, "All residential subdivisions created after the adoption of this chapter shall have a maximum residential density of four units per gross acre." And then the second sentence, under B, I'm asking that we also revise it to say, "The R10 zone shall have a minimum density of 10 units per net developable acres and a maximum of 10 units per gross acre." I don't know if that is the intent. I don't, I apologize. I'm going to strike that last recommendation, the second recommendation of a maximum of 10 units per gross acre. I don't think we should put a maximum in an area that's considered to be our multifamily zoning in an urban growth area. I apologize. I just thought about that now. So, I only want to add that "per" just for clarification.
Okay. And no other changes to your-
No.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, any additional-
I have a comment when the time comes.
Okay, I thought you had a question. Okay, with that, I would open up for public comment. Again, if you'd like to make comment on this, please come forward, and the chair will recognize you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Tom Davis, I would be in support of this amendment. It speaks directly to what I'm going to speak to when we come a little bit further down in the schedule, but, so I'll just give you a little preemption of what, why I find this to be an attractive amendment, and one is that I think it's in our best interest to also entertain attracting people who can afford homes in the $200,000, $300,000, and $400,000 range. I think there's a need, and I also think that there's a desire, a market for it. If you follow, as I'm sure you do, Commissioner, the one, if you follow the real estate market here, you'll see that the inventory for $100,000 and $200,000 homes is exhausted. It's difficult to find buyers in the $200,000 and $300,000 range, and as you get up higher, it has even been confessed that that would require probably some, a buyer from outside the area. So, I'd like to speak later about the rural residential code, but by all means, you should not ignore that market because I believe that's a viable future market. So, I'm going to support that.
Thank you. Any additional comment on the revision, the proposed revisions to the Belfair urban growth area development?
Rob Drexler, 51 Sinclair Place. I am a Realtor. I do that up there all the time, and this is definitely a market need. We have, eh, we have three, I believe, homes built in the UGA, the Belfair UGA since the UGA, the GMA came into effect in that price range. We have nothing to sell. We have a lot of people that would like to have homes, and some of the homes we want, if you have, Tom mentioned that attracting other people over, well, the fact of the matter is, is if we have people coming over from Seattle and that sort of thing, rural to them is not 4,000-foot lots like they have in Seattle. Rural to them over here, even in the urban areas, are bigger, nicer lots. So, I think this is a very, very needed change to the, to the plan here. Lost my word. But anyway, so, I would, I would highly recommend accepting this into the rest of the plan. Thank you.
Other public comment, please?
Good morning. Lisa Klein with AHBL, and I'm representing the applicant for the Belfair Development Regulation changes. In specific to the proposed amendment this morning, we would be in support of that amendment, primarily because it speaks to what our overall intent was with these regulations, which was to provide more variety and provide more flexibility for developers and landowners who wish to do something with their property in the Belfair UGA. So, this, we believe, would be an important improvement to the proposal that we originally submitted. I, as a planner, have a recommendation for one other change, which is consistent with this, which is that in both the R4 and RR5 sections of the code, there are tables, and those tables describe density. So, I think the minimum language is repeated in those tables, so we'll just want to make sure that that is struck as well, again, just for consistency purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment?
Constance Davidson, 6500 East State Route 106 in Union. This is a question. First, is that yesterday in the afternoon, I received this revised agenda. So, it's, when we're considering this now, is this for the, all the regulations that were changed for the whole Belfair area are just the one that's been passed out this morning? There's been more changes suggested. Are we going to do that under number five, to talk about the other changes to the Belfair UGA-
So, are you asking, are we just talking about the proposed amendments, or are we talking about the actual overall code regulation?
For the rest of them for the Belfair UGA.
Right. So, this is, so this hearing is for the revisions that are proposed to the Belfair urban growth area development regulation?
And they won't, this will not be considered elsewhere in the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. So, I had prepared testimony before I got the revised agenda. So, just let me say that my concern is that it's been approximately a year since the, I mean, a decade since the county adopted unfunded stormwater plants for both its UGAs. So, and in these regulations, the proposed development regulations diminish the low-impact development mitigation measures to control and treat stormwater. And so, the inaction and the failure to implement stormwater management plans means that the government and taxpayers will be paying for retrofits or the costs of neglected and degraded waters. Further, I noticed that the, the proposed Belfair UGA development regulations allow mobile home and RV parks. There was discussion about mostly onseptic systems inside the UGA. At the Planning Commission meeting, a developer proposing this change explained that when another use and or financing for these properties are identified, then the residents would be displaced. I doubt this will contribute to orderly development within the UGA.
Thank you. Any additional comment?
Good morning. My name's Joel Baxter. I'm here today on behalf of the Olympia Master Builders. We wanted to speak in support of these, of these amendments today to the Development Code Guidelines for the Belfair UGA. We'd like to express our support for these amendments because they create flexibility to help spark growth that's much needed here in Mason County. These amendments bring the county in line with similar jurisdictions in the region, which will not only make life easier for current residents who are interested in building here, but will attract new residents to the county as well. This will in turn help to grow the county's tax base, improving its financial standing, making it easier to provide needed government services. We thank you, we thank the commission and staff and private entities that worked, worked on this, and encourage them to continue to look for additional areas to create more flexibility like this. It'll help improve and not hamper the county's economic outlook and ability to sustain growth in Mason County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close.
Do you have any one more comment?
Please.
Okay.
Sorry, I was thinking that my previous comment needed to be specific to the amendment of this morning, and so I did have just a couple other comments that I wanted to make, again, in support of the- again, in support of the proposed development regulations. As we've talked about previously, the existing Belfair Development Regulations really fill out of place for Belfair. When you consider that Mason County is a very rural county, and the desire is to bring the densities to Belfair, it still doesn't change that Belfair has a fairly rural character to it. And the existing development regulations as they are, are quite strict and detailed when it comes to residential development there. So our proposal was seeking to really right-size the regulations appropriate for Belfair. And I, I think that with approval of these, that you will see some encouragement of development in a way that hasn't been happening. There is one question that I have, and maybe Paula can help with this, which was that we had also proposed some changes to some definitions that I'm not sure I'm seeing in the package today. One was related to a definition for lot coverage to be added to MCC 1706010 or Belfair UGA Reg 1720020. And then we had also proposed a new definition for yard setbacks to be proposed to MCC 1706010. There was a memo that we had provided dated October 19.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you repeat the code again?
Yep. And in fact, I can summarize those, if you'd like me to summarize what those are. Okay. So the yard setback was to be added to MCC 1706010.
Thank you.
And it is a definition that is specific to all yard setbacks, and it includes the same definition language for the other yard setback definitions, because there's several. But it adds language similar to what's currently in the Allen UGA. Would you like me to read it? Are you all familiar with that?
We actually briefed on it. I'm curious.
We did brief on it. That's why I wasn't.
I'm curious of her answers.
I would, I'd just remind the Commissioners that this was in a memo that you received, and we have it, and it complements the code amendments that we've discussed today, and we do have those changes in place.
So those are in the packet?
They're considered part of this.
Okay.
And it's been on the, right.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional public comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period on item number three and move to Commissioner discussion and a possible motion.
Given what we just heard, I think we have additional amendments to what we've been presented. One would be to 17.22.050. This is the table describing the bulk and dimensional standards for the R-4 zone under density to strike the language and a minimum density of three units per developable acre. And then on page eight of our document, under 17.22.100, bulk and dimensional standards, again, it's the table, but this is for the R-5 zone, under density to strike the language and a minimum density of four units per developable acre. Under 17.22.150, bulk and dimensional standards for the R-10 multifamily residential district to strike the language under density in the table and a minimum density of 10 units per net developable acre.
Say that last one again, and the strike?
I withdraw that. I withdraw that one.
Okay.
Getting confused here.
That's okay.
Okay. So if you could just, I'm sorry, 17.22.050.
050.
Strike minimum.
And a minimum density of three units per net developable acres.
And then it was 17.22.100, same?
Correct.
And then was?
And then nothing after that.
Those were the only two?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can, I'd like to talk about this just a little bit. First off, I want to give a thank you to the community members who came forward and made all this stuff happen. As somebody that's from Belfair, I can tell you, and a Realtor over the years, how, how hamstrung they have been up there with potential development, even the simplest of development. And instead, what started out with good intentions, with people who put it together, had a negative effect and allows the, and has helped to restrict the one area where you do want growth to occur. You know, a lot of people can have arguments whether they want anything to happen in the rural area or not, but with the Growth Management Act, it's kind of assumed that growth will occur in the urban growth areas. And some of the stuff we had were definitely hindering us. These, these adjustments that were brought forward definitely will help to allow the property owners to get the highest and best use out of their property again. And I want to give a special thank you to Commissioner Drexler. Now, we've had a lot of discussions about these issues, but she did the work to actually put it forward. And, you know, as you all know, actually doing the work does have a, does make a difference. So thank you for, for doing all that. I hope that we will eventually, and I'm not going to do, bring it into the discussion today, but I hope as we look at the next updating of this during the year, that we'll have further discussions about the minimum use in the RR10. But for the moment, I am, I am so happy with what we're doing now that I don't even want to have a negative aspect on it. I think a job well done, and I will be definitely voting in support of that and the amendments.
Thank you.
I think Mason County's development code has, has really benefited when the potential developer comes in and takes a look at the code and says, you know, this is the problem with it. I'd asked our Economic Development Council to do that for commercial things, commercial development here and there. You don't find out that there's a problem until somebody goes to implement something. And so many times, I was part of the Planning Commission when we adopted this code, so I have a little chagrin that this was something I had voted for and supported yea, 10 years ago. However, thank you for stepping up, Mr. Jones and AHBL, I think I got that right, to take a look at it and, and find the areas that were just causing the problems to, to prevent development there. I think that, that our development codes ought to be iterative, and I think that this is a one first step, and I agree with you, Commissioner Netherton, that we need to, to continue to look at all of our codes, not just the Belfair one. And then I thank you for supporting the, potentially supporting the amendments to allow, allow a housing product. I think we might be one of the few, few counties that, you know, should this pass, that will allow a housing product like this that wasn't already pre-platted. And so I don't know if this will come back to bite us in, in some form or some way regarding a legal standing, but I think it's time for us to step out and say, "Growth management, you've got to work for our rural communities and for the housing market." And I'm very, very proud that we're going to be doing this.
I want to tackle, and you're right, Commissioner, there's, we are taking a chance with what we're putting forward, but we already know the other does not work. And we had a Realtor stand up and speak about the amount of growth that had occurred there. It shows, again, it does not work, and we have to do what's best for the community and we'll defend it, I think.
Very good. I would just add my thanks as well for, for bringing forward these thoughts. I think our, I think our code generally, our policies generally are made better with citizen engagement. They're made better when you have more sets of eyes looking at, you know, the realities of, of the code or the policy. And I think this is another step in a very positive direction for Belfair. And I think it's another step in our, along the way for us this year where we've taken, taken the initiative, I think, to really improve and streamline and make more flexible and reasonable our, our planning and development regulations in the county. And appreciate the Planning Commission being open to hearing these and going through the process and then moving them on for our consideration. And so I, I too will be supporting the amendments that have been presented today as well as the revisions presented to the development regulations. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Did you do the honors?
I'd be happy to. Mr. Chair, I move the approval of, of the amendments to the Belfair Urban Growth Area Development Regulations, Mason County Code 17.20 through 17.35 as amended.
I very happily second.
It's been moved and seconded to, let me restate that.
To approve the Belfair Urban Growth Area Development Regulations, MCC 17.20 through 17.35 as amended.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve those amendments as stated in the motion. Any additional discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Okay. Now with that, we move on to our public hearings for county-initiated amendments. Item number four, consider revisions to Mason County Code, chapters 17 and 15.
So in addition to the three comprehensive plan amendments proposed by citizens that you just heard, Mason County is proposing amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations, including amendments to meet current state and federal requirements. And the first of those is our agricultural lands amendment. It amends Mason County Code 1704502, 1721010, and 8.52061. These are title for zoning and title for resource ordinance. This amendment is required by state law, and it limits non-agricultural uses to those agricultural lands less suited for agricultural purposes. And that's done through a soils evaluation and part of our resource ordinance process.
Paula, one question for you.
Sure.
So are we having separate hearings on chapter 17 and then a separate one on 15?
It would, this particular hearing is on this minor amendment to these three portions of our code that I read off. If I, if you'd like me to read them again, I would be happy to do that.
Please.
So that would be Mason County Code 1704502, 1721010, and 8.52061. And again, this would limit non-agricultural uses on those agricultural lands that are less suited for ag purposes.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Do you have?
Please.
Do you happen to have a definition of non-agricultural use? I guess I'm trying to differentiate, would a barn, obviously, is an agricultural use?
That's right. So it would be like a, a building that wasn't being used for agricultural purposes. In some cases, those will be placed on agricultural lands. And the state law just provides guidance that we would cite that on a place that would be less suitable to grow.
But no real definition of non-agricultural. I'm just wondering if, is that a, is that a staff analysis of whether or not it's an agricultural use or not?
No, no. Right. There's definite, there's a definition in our, and I can look that up for you if you like quickly.
As long as we have guidance.
We do have guidance, and so it's not intended to limit any kind of agricultural uses that would be permitted in agricultural zones.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, then, I would open up a public comment on Mason County Code 17.04.502, 17.21.010, and 8.52.061.
Tom Davis. I was kind of hoping we'd have a broader discussion on this, but this is, this is what's on the table. I had, this was a, a word worm to me. I couldn't, I couldn't figure out exactly what was the intention of, of the wording. It says, and this is an RCW, so I don't agree with it, but who cares? The limit non-agricultural, agricultural uses to agricultural lands less suited for agricultural purposes. Sounds like, excuse me, that's intended to, to limit the purpose of agricultural land to anything but agricultural purposes, even if it's not, not suitable for agricultural purposes. This kind of strikes at the heart of what I was bringing up before. And we have, we have about 40,000 acres, my understanding is, of rural, rural land that's suitable for residential development. And I'd, I'd like to see that exploited a little bit more, maybe exploited isn't quite the word, but to be utilized in a way that, again, attracts higher-income people. I can't do anything about the, this particular RCW, but there are certain other aspects of our rural development codes that favor just the natural resources end of it at the expense of the residential growth end of this particular market. And that market, to me, is what generates the income from the county. If you, if we don't, if we don't have a flavor that we'd like to develop more high-end residences in the rural area, then we probably won't attract them. And bear in mind that probably one high-end home on one acre in the residential area will generate more, more property taxes than a thousand acres of timberland at their effective tax rate. So it's not something, it, it seems like we're all going one, one way. And I, I'll, just to give you an example of how it's put in writing, it says, "When, when new businesses come in," and this is part of this, part of our comprehensive suggestions, "to help new residents and businesses understand the heritage and importance of natural resource industries in Mason County while mitigating potential nuisance conflicts." I don't take offense on that personally, but my feeling is there are other uses for these properties, and we should start entertaining more residential growth in our urban areas. Over the past few years, I've seen some definitions in our Rural Ordinance Code that, for instance, would take inholding lands, and they would remain inholding lands as defined even though the criteria for inholding lands were removed. In other words, so that made very little sense to me, but it, it shows a bias and an intent that I don't think is in the best interest of our future. I think the economic growth of Mason County is in the residential area rather than the business area, simply because I always say, when you're making, you're generating $80 million from property taxes and $5 million from sales and use, that's where the money is. So I don't see that particular Title 17 as being a good instrument for economic growth in Mason County, considering some of the limitations that I'm reading in between the lines here. I'd like to start a little conversation about how we can best use our, use those rural areas to better attract people from outside the county. And I have an agenda. I'd love to see new people come from outside the county, and I'd like to see them be people of means, so we attract people to increase our tax base, so we don't stand here every year wondering where we're going to get the money for our public services. I know this is a bit off track, but it's really why I came here to speak in the first place. I, I think that that's, that's where our, our future lies. In that, in the comprehensive plan, it also says that, it was odd to me, it says that in Mason County, basically, there was a study done, and the people in Mason County are less educated than the people in the region and in the state overall. I, I would, wouldn't, I take exceptions to that. I, I think that they, that's, a lot of people are less informed than they need to be, but education itself, whether it's formal education, so on. So the reason I bring that up is because when we pass these ordinances and it violates or at least interferes with somebody's quality of life, boy, I'll tell you, they come in here and they let you know what, what they think, and in no uncertain terms, but that's, that's too late. What I'd like to see is that, that more people get involved in this process, obviously, before they have to come in and say, hey, there's something down at the bottom of my driveway, and I don't like it. driveway, and I don't like it. So, and I'd like to see our rural ordinances reflect that sensitivity. So, I guess the only thing I really want to leave you with is that when we're looking at the rural market, when we're looking at the natural resource industry, let's remember that there are other uses for that land that could generate more money, and maybe we should need to have a conversation along those lines. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment on these items?
I think Kath wanted to comment on that.
James, if you'd let Paula just.
I just have a staff clarification for Commissioners on that. I wanted to be clear that this, that these revisions we're talking about related to agricultural land are limited to the 8,000 acres of agriculturally-zoned land. They do not include our natural resource lands outside of that. So, I think there was a couple of things put together there, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I had not intended to speak on this particular issue. James Thomas, Ellen Washington, I also chair the Planning Advisory Commission. First, I would like to say, when, when we write laws and regulations, let's not try and read between the lines, let's read what the lines say. The only thing that this, that this does is suggest that the very limited agricultural land that we have, the best of that agricultural land, be used just for agriculture. We're only talking about 8,000 acres. And of those 8,000 acres, lands that are not particularly well-suited to agriculture, well, let's go ahead and use them for something else. I am, I am in full support of Tom's ideas about getting more residential action in Mason County, but the other side of that coin is we have the Growth Management Act for a reason to manage growth, and this is how we do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tricia Van Dehe, 111 Southeast Loop and Place, Shelton. I think part of this idea of increasing the residential areas sort of centers around the rules on clustering, which seems to have been kind of a thorn in its side with all, well, I know it has been with Green Diamond and with some other areas, because it, there's a tendency there, and I've been at a couple of these ones where they've had this, looking at property, and I wouldn't want to live in it. I mean, it's like being in a, oh, you're confined, you're very, very confined, and there's an open area for everybody, but the actual houses and what you have there and that are very limited. The, the act that deals with the rural element states that rural clusters may not create a pattern of development that relies on or requires urban governmental services. Counties should establish a limit on the size of the residential cluster so that a cluster does not constitute urban growth in a rural area. A very large project may create multiple smaller clusters that are separated from each other and use a different access point to avoid creating a pattern of development that would constitute urban growth. So, perhaps trying to deal with having more clusters but keeping them at a reasonable area. I think originally what it was, was it could be 32 houses, no matter what the size of the property was. And there's, you know, there's some property there, acres and acres and acres, so 32 houses wasn't very, very many place that they have in it. But this is the WAC, WAC number 365, 196-425, and it's specifically the rural element. So, I think that's something that should be taken into consideration, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on these particular chapters? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of, of this on 17.04.502, 17.21.010, and 8.52.061, and move to Commissioner Discussion and a possible motion.
A piece of discussion now. Tom, in regards to what you were saying, this is, this is a situation, in my understanding, where we're doing what's necessary, not all that could have been done. The same thing happened in Keesop County last year, and it first blew up, and then the community got involved to get in because they were literally throwing a king-size blanket over something that just needed a coaster to cover. And it, in my opinion, at this point, what the staff and all did is they brought it back to just what we've been doing for several years now, and that is getting back to what's necessary and required instead of everything that could possibly have been done with it. But I think it's a requirement that we're fulfilling. Just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I, I would like to speak to this. The, the agricultural resource land designation almost automatically presumes that that land is now taxed under current use ag tax preference, preference. And so, the idea that somebody would be able to do something other than agriculture on land that has a lower tax rate because the assumption is it will be farmed or used in some sort of agricultural use, I think that that needs to be protected against. And so, yes, if, if the soils are not appropriate for farming, that's where you do your building. That's where you put your home. That's where you put the new driveway or whatever. And, and I think it's only fair that if you have a lower tax rate on your property because you are an ag use, that you use that property for ag purposes. And I think if somebody has another use for an ag-zoned property, then they can come back and ask for a rezon.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we amend Mason County Code 17.04.502, 17.21.001, and That limits non-agricultural uses to agricultural lands less suited for agricultural purposes per RCW 36.70A.177 subsection 3.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to amend Mason County Code 17.04.502, 17.21.010, and 8.52.061 to limit non-agricultural uses to agricultural lands less suited for agricultural purposes per RCW 36.70A.177 subsection 3. Any additional discussion?
Just another clarification. What happened in our program in county was the idea is they tried to stretch it to anything that could possibly be used, and that is a huge difference. So, being restricted to what we're actually, was required and talking to is a good thing.
Okay, very good. Any additional discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is revisions to Chapter 15.
So, a quick reminder that the planning commissioners have deliberated extensively on each of these items, and that forum occurs every third Monday at 6:00 PM, and encourage anyone interested in the discussion to please participate. So, on Mason County Code 1507.030, this is a public engagement amendment. It will ensure continued public involvement in the comprehensive plan, including the annual and emergency amendments. And currently, that's required by state law and not stated exactly that way in our code. This revision simply clarifies that inclusion of public engagement in emergency amendments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, but I think just for clarification, we ought to read it out loud, if that's okay, just so that the public knows what language we're adding.
Okay. I can do that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
With your concurrence, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to.
Okay.
We're adding a section four under the notice of public meetings and public hearings. Emergency amendments to Mason County Comprehensive Plan. Public notice and an opportunity for public comment must precede the adoption of emergency amendments to the comprehensive plan. Provisions of RCW, and it cites the RCW, apply only to moratoria or interim development regulations. They do not apply to comprehensive plan amendments. If an emergency comprehensive plan amendment is necessary, a moratoria or interim zoning control should be adopted. The county should then consider the comprehensive plan amendment concurrently with the consideration of permanent amendments and only after public notice and an opportunity for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Okay. With that, I'll open the public comment period on Mason County Code, or revisions to Mason County Code 15.07.030. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and move on to Commissioner Discussion and a possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have long been a proponent of moving things back through our, our planning commission, and including emergency and stuff is a no-brainer with that. So, with that, I will make a motion that we go ahead and approve the recommendation, the change in Mason County Code 15.07.030 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments to Mason County Code 15.07.030 as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Next item is amendments to Mason County Code 17.03.022.
This is an electric vehicle charging station amendment to Mason County Code 1703.022. Again, that's 1703.022. This permits electric vehicle charging stations in all zones except residential resource or critical areas in compliance with Washington state law. And these charging stations would not be necessarily publicly funded, more likely privately funded.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'll move to the public comment period. If you'd like to make comment on this amendment, please come forward, and the chair will recognize you. You got my hope? Got excited there.
For those that are, that are behind the cameras that can't see it, we had somebody that stood up in the back, started walking like they were coming over, and they just continued to walk out the door.
They left.
That's why the silence.
Okay, any comment?
James Thomas, Ellen Washington, just wanted to make the point, the, the question came up during our deliberations of this at the planning commission, that a, an unusual reading of the language would, might lead someone to believe that individuals are prohibited from charging their own electric vehicles by this. And that is, in fact, not the case at all. This amendment just covers public charging stations, and that's certainly something that we don't want anyone to have in their garage, having people come up and charging their vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period on amendments to Mason County Code MC, 17.03.022, and move to Commissioner Discussion and a possible motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the addition of Mason County Code 17.03.022 that permit electric vehicle charging stations in all zones except residential, resource, or critical areas.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments to Mason County Code 17.03.022 to permit electric vehicle charging stations in all zones except residential resource and critical areas as presented. Any additional discussion?
I think it's just kind of indicative that our planning commission handles things that people would never think has to come up.
I would just say, too, when I was on the planning commission a couple of years ago, we had a lot of conversations around electric vehicles, and I think part of those were included in the transportation element that has been previously adopted, but I'm happy to see this, this amendment and think that's another important step forward for our community, and especially as you know how much we rely on tourism and people coming through. And we see along I-5, there's, it's a green highway, they have a lot of charging stations along I-5, and I think this is hopefully part of a bigger movement to electrify the 101 loop as well. And so, I think it's an opportunity for, to attract people that might be afraid if they leave their home, that they might not make it very far, and get them to stop in Mason County and charge up and take advantage of all we have to offer. So, I'm happy this is part of the conversation.
Tourism aspect is actually a very important part. I remember when they first put the one in Belfair, we all kind of giggled a little bit, but the truth is, it's actually on lists that show people where they can go. And it took a long time before I saw the first person use it other than the owner of the, the building, but now you can pull in there and you'll see they're charging while they're having lunch, because it's on the loop. And it's kind of a, a time that's changing, so it needs to be in there. Thanks for your work on that, guys.
Okay. Hearing no additional discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. With that, we'll move to our fifth item on the public hearing agenda, consider revisions to the Mason County Code Chapter 6 and the Mason County 2016-2036 Comprehensive Plan Update. First item is amendments to Mason County Code 6.68, revisions to water adequacy regulations in response to public comment.
I think we have one more, though.
Really?
Don't we have 6.68?
Isn't that what I just said?
Okay, I'm sorry.
You put the two together.
And then I called out 6.68.
Apologize.
Yeah, no problem. Paula?
So, in my earlier briefing, I stated that we've made these revisions to ensure water is legally and actually available for permit-exempt wells, Group B, and two-party wells before approving either buildings or subdivisions. We've also outlined these processes in internal operating guidelines. We've, the internal operating guidelines serve until we are able to complete a 2018 comprehensive water plan, and these amendments to Title 6 were recommended by the planning commission in response to public comment.
Okay, very good. Any questions for staff? Okay. With that, I'll open the public comment period on amendments to Mason County Code 6.68. If you'd like to make comment, please come forward.
Hi. My name is Sharon Hensley. I'm a lawyer for the Squawson Island Tribe, and thank you very, very much for, for being here. I'll have comments both on this and also on the comprehensive plan. And I was going to save this for the, the larger discussion on the comprehensive plan, but I want to just first start by just giving my great appreciation to the public process and to Dave Wyndham and Paula Reeves for the openness, the discussions that we've had. It's been refreshing. I, I wish I could say that we've gotten to the, a place that the tribe thinks is sufficient. We haven't, but it's different. It's like a breath of fresh air. So, we, I just want to thank them and you for that. I had a chance last, I guess it was about a week ago, to look at the proposed changes to the Water Adequacy Ordinance, Chapter 6.68. It does two good things that the tribe's been urging for years. Number one, it gets rid of some exceptions where folks don't have to comply with it because the exceptions didn't take into account that somebody might want to modify a building and use more water. And so, now that is covered by these regulations, and that is good. And the other thing that it does is take care, take out a waiver that allows the county just to say, in certain kinds of circumstances, we don't have to follow this code either. But I have to say what it doesn't do, and I, and I hate to contradict Paula, but it, it does not cover all exempt wells and make sure that the county's asking the hard question of whether a person applying for a building permit or a subdivision that's going to use any kind of a permit-exempt well, whether the water is really available, or whether there are actually senior in-stream flows or by law or closures on a stream and that well's connected to the stream. And as you know, you get enough of these wells in a And as you know, you get enough of these wells in a small basin, and you have an impact. You do have an impact. What the code currently does is a good thing. The code currently says that somebody who applies for a building permit with an individual well is supposed to provide the county with assurance that the well's not going to impact or, what's the word, interfere with existing rights. I am not aware that the county's ever followed that. It's in your code. I don't think there's been implementation of it. But Class B wells, individual wells, there are Class B, two-party wells, those are not covered by your code, nor are subdivisions. There's no requirement that somebody, that the county asks those questions of somebody applying for a subdivision, but the law, state law, requires that. So we're pleased about some little steps in this code, but it doesn't get you to the right place. So I would urge deferring a vote and getting all of the amendments into the code that would comply with state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comment?
Rob Drexler. Again, I'm a Realtor, and this has impacted my industry and economic growth in this county for, since the Hearst decision came out, that's the common thing for it. And we need to do something to keep things moving forward. We stifle growth by all sorts of ways, and this is just one more way to do that. We need to have some sort of, some sort of mechanism that allows those that want to develop to be able to develop and build their houses and build their homes. I think the legislature's going to eventually fix this in some form or another, and I would recommend moving forward where at least someone has, at least the folks out there have some mechanism to go through right now to build their homes on the land they own. Thank you.
Joel Baxter, again, for the Mason County chapter of the Olympia Master Builders. The Olympia Master Builders are concerned about the amendments made to the Mason County Water Adequacy Regulations in Chapter 6.68 as an attempted means to satisfy the Hearst Supreme Court decision on exempt wells. It is premature to codify a Supreme Court ruling, while the state legislature is still actively attempting to fix that ruling. In fact, a week from today, on December 12th, the House Ag and Natural Resources Committee is going to be holding a hearing, a session hearing on this very, this very subject. And so at this point, we ask the Commission to focus its efforts on keeping pressure on the Washington State Association of Counties and your legislators to create a fix for Hearst, which will maintain property rights for its citizens. We also have some concern over the timeline. I don't know how, what could have truly been done to avoid this, because you have to accept comment all the way up until today, and we understand that. The Squawson have provided a lot of information, and we just haven't had time to even review all of it. We haven't had an opportunity to address all the concerns. And that's, I don't know what, what to do about that, but it's just difficult when all the information is coming through. We're handling a lot of issues at one time, and it's made us, you know, I mean, that's why we basically are giving a paragraph on something that obviously has a very, could have a very damaging effect on our industry, because there's no way for us to even summarize the number of issues that have been brought up in the last couple of weeks. So again, I'm, I'm not sure how to do that, but to, to vote at this time before that information has been reviewed is, would be of concern to us. So thank you for your time, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Dave Wyndham, Mason County Community Services Director. Just a couple of clarifications really quick. So Sharon, on your, if you look at 6.68.040, we do talk about Group B and two-party water systems. And if you look at 6.8, or 6.8.050, C1, we talk about subdivisions, and it's in there in the provisions.
These are, I'm sorry, these are changes that you've made? Because I, I looked at, I, the changes that I saw were in red, and they didn't show.
That's in there, yeah.
It just says, "Meeting all state and local regulations." It doesn't say assurance that there won't be an impact.
Well, if it says elsewhere, "Local regulation requires legal availability," it's recovered. You don't have to repeat it multiple places.
I didn't see that.
So, so that's very well. We're trying to streamline it as well. And to get to Master Builders' question, I had a question, I get questions daily on Hearst, if not, multiple times a day. And the biggest issue that we're trying to address with all this is getting past the angst of Hearst and get to some sort of certainty for the public, what can I do with my property and when? So, and that's what we're trying to get to. So we're working on the master water plans, we're looking at mitigation measures, we have some, we're being kind of pushed down a road. We don't necessarily want to go down, but at least for the interim, we have to answer the question, what is legally available water? So that's what we're working, and working with the tribe, and working with others to try to get to that, answer that question in a way that everybody can understand. And then, once we have that, have a process in place that staff understands, when people come through the door, it's easy to grasp, and then development continues.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Dave, I have a question. I'm curious.
Okay. Seeing no additional public comment at this time, I'll close the public hearing and move to Commissioner Discussion and a possible motion.
Chairman, a couple of comments, one for the tribe to express, I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying, but I think there may be a little bit of confusion here on, on two different issues. The first one is to make sure that we recognize our role in establishing that there's legally water available for the inflow. The mechanism in the code of which to do that is a different thing than this, this document here. We will continue to work on our actual code and our formulas to try to work it out, but I think it was a big thing that it was included in the plan as is required by law. So there's two different aspects of that, so we can continue to have further discussions on how to get there or have a plan that you will be more comfortable with, but for now, just meeting the requirement was necessary. And the same thing goes for the builders, just let them know, you know, we have to be able to meet these, these requirements in order to move the plan forward. And we would have to stop everything if we left that out, because we know it'd be challenged. We know we'd actually be stopped eventually at one point, because it does say that we have to account for it somewhere. But the actual, the actual code, the actual way we end up doing it, that's a further discussion anyway. Just wanted to include that with my comments. But I'm very happy with all the work that has gone on, into this, in order to keep things moving. You know, it has not been a short trip, that's for sure. And there's been a lot of weight carried over there in that department, and I very much appreciate all your hard work. And I don't know if they've even seen some of the formulas that you've come up with and the work that you've done, but it's not something you can get off the shelf. It's something that had to be created somewhere, and that's what we're working on, and I'm very proud of our staff for doing that.
Thank you. Any comments, Commissioner?
I concur, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Netherton, regarding the response to the tribe's concerns. I think that we need to meet all state and local regulations, what may or may not happen with the legislature, and the need to make sure that you have legal availability is contained within the, in the legal, or the state regulations, as well as our locals. So I think we're covering the, what changes Hearst decision has created while being open and flexible for any future changes that we're all hoping on at the legislature. I also commend staff, I commend the tribe for working with us on this. I hope that we can get to a place where we're working together on assessing the impacts of water extraction and ways to mitigate those and to still open up the opportunity for folks to build on their properties. So I am in favor of these changes, and I wait with bated breath to see what the future holds regarding the state addressing this, this very complicated issue.
Thank you. Appreciate both the remarks of Commissioners Netherton and Drexler on this issue. This is an issue that I think has kept a lot of people up at night on both sides of it, and I, I will say, and this might, I don't, maybe don't want to make news here, but this is not a perfect policy, but I think we're in a position where we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I was thinking about the song "Stuck in the Middle" with you, as I was thinking about the, our responses and potential responses to the Hearst ruling, and, you know, in light of the legislature's inaction on, on Hearst without remedy coming from the legislative level, counties, not just Mason, but counties across the state are being forced to go it alone and figure this one out with, with their local partners. And I think, I think we have the capacity to do that, and we've shown, in particular to our tribal partners, that we're willing to work together and find areas where we can agree in an effort to keep the conversation moving forward. And I appreciated Sharon very much your remarks today, but we have to keep the process moving. We have to get in compliance with the Department of Commerce and some of those other aspects with a strong commitment from the county to move forward in 2018 with the Comprehensive Water Plan and certainly hope and believe that the Squawson will have a seat at that table with us and work in a collaborative way, in a partnership there. Again, I also tip my hat to the Planning Commission and our planning staff, who've worked diligently on this issue and have done their very best to respond to public concerns and comments on, on this. Mason County has a great opportunity here to be a leader in our state when it comes to water resource conservation. We have an opportunity here to be a leader in our state on moving policy forward that, that benefits everybody in our community, that allows for growth in a sustainable way. And I think this is the first step of many in that direction, and so I will be supporting the revisions that have been brought forward here with, with the caveat that there's much work left to do, and we're stuck in the middle. Let's get it done.
Commissioner, it's very important that people realize that what occurred this time was bringing forward a plan that is only this big. You know, it's funny, you've heard the old expression, ignorance of the law is no excuse and the like, but to be a good plan, it has to be workable. To be workable, it has to be comprehensible in some way. To be able to take it down to this amount is, is very important for us to be able to move forward without having a bunch of battles, especially legal battles. Anything that can be interpreted is a legal battle. I'd like to just point out, because I've had other conversations, not just with tribal members, but about the idea of having those formulas and stuff in Comprehensive Plan. Could you imagine, we just got done bringing it down to a size that's, for some, this will not even be realistic, but if you knew what it was, if we put all the formulas of all the things we have in here into this book, it would be that thick, because that's all of our codes. The codes are the formula, and that's the proper place for formulas. The Comprehensive Plan is not the proper place for formulas. I just wanted to put that forward.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, are you willing to entertain a separate motion on revisions to Chapter 6.68? Or are we doing them together with the comp plan update?
We're taking them one at a time.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the revisions to Chapter 6.68, Mason County Water Adequacy Regulations as presented.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve amendments to Mason County Code 6.68 as the stated, as stated in the motion. Any additional discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.
Great work.
And it moves us to our final area of consideration this morning, which is considering revisions to Mason County's 2016-2036 Comprehensive Plan update. Staff, forward to brief.
So, last item on the docket, the Mason County 2016-2036 Comprehensive Plan is an update from the 2005 plan. It's required by RCW 3670A. The update includes an update of population and employment forecasts, it updates, the updates necessitated by changes in state law, revision to our countywide planning policies, and incorporation of new public input. I want to thank planning staff, Marissa Watson, for her work on policy review and improving readability. So much work there. Each element of the Comprehensive Plan has been updated, including land use, housing, transportation, utilities, economic development, shorelines, capital facilities, parks, recreation, and rural elements. As I mentioned in my previous comments, the Planning Commission has deliberated for three years, including 40 public meetings and hearings and many other efforts to engage the public in this process. This is written by the residents of Mason County, and it represents their vision for the future.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, with that, I will move into the public hearing portion of this item. If you'd like to make comment, please come forward to the podium, and the chair will recognize you.
Thank you again. I hope you're not tired of me by the end of this morning. I just, I do want to just clarify, with all respect to Dave, that the code doesn't do the things that I said it wasn't, doesn't do from our perspective. And as far as formulas and, you know, making a code so thick and incomprehensible, the development regulations are kind of where the rubber meets the road. And so if there's going to be formulas or process for evaluating water availability, which there really isn't as far as the legal water availability, I agree that that doesn't go in the Comprehensive Plan, that goes in the development regulations, but unfortunately there, it's not there. And one last thing about, I guess, Chapter 6.68 as it now stands, I guess the tribe would ask that the county actually implement the portion of the development regulations that require assurance from people who are applying for building permits for single well, with single wells, that they are sure that it's not going to impair existing rights. I don't think that's ever happened, to my knowledge. We've asked about it, I've never seen it indicated that it's used. As far as the Comprehensive Plan goes, again, thank you for letting me testify. Just for, for the necessary background, the tribe has a treaty right to fish, the tribe is a co-manager with the state of the fisheries. You've heard it so many times, it's cliche, but salmon is the backbone of the Squawson Island Tribe. You need fresh water for salmon, you need sufficient amounts of it in streams, because the more fresh water that you have in streams, and especially during the dry summer, early fall months, the more salmon come back to those streams. You start to take water out of those streams, even small amounts, you get less wetted habitat, you guess, you get less fish returning to those streams. And, and the tribe just, it's here, the tribe has been here forever, the tribe is going to be here forever. It doesn't want to see this sort of death-by-a-thousand cuts from these permit-exempt wells that aren't being regulated. So the GMA requires that county comp plans match growth to where water is legally available. And unfortunately, there's some good information in this comp plan, but it doesn't do that. It doesn't show where water is, it doesn't even acknowledge that there are these in-stream flows that got set back in 1984 that are senior water rights, and they can't be impaired by later junior wells that are in connection with those waters. The Comprehensive Plan doesn't, doesn't mention that, and it doesn't try to match where it's projecting all the rural growth is going to go with where the water is available. And if it's not available, what's the county going to do? And what the tribe would really like to see the county do is not impose burdens on individual landowners to do expensive hydrological studies and that, you know, you, you know that it's going to be just a tiny amount of water. Again, it's death-by-a-thousand cuts. The tribe believes that the best approach is for the county to allow growth to continue in the rural areas. We know it's, it's wanted, the tribe doesn't want to stand in the way of growth in the rural areas, but to come up with smart, scientific, sustainable mitigation. up with smart, scientific, sustainable mitigation packages. The Johns Creek Model showed that for certain parts of the watershed, that the impacts on water of permitting exempt wells is not that large. And that means that mitigation is not going to be that hard. It can happen. You do reclaimed water, you do imposed water conservation, you impose restrictions on outdoor use in certain key areas. There's a lot of things the county can do, and I don't, it's doable, I'm not saying it's easy, but it will allow sustainable, long-term growth in the county that doesn't suck water out of the creeks. And we know that climate change is coming. What am I saying it's coming? It's here. And the summers are only going to get drier, and there's going to be an even more of a need for the county to conserve the water in the streams. I think that's most of what I want to say. We learned about a week ago that there's going to be, I guess, a 2018 comprehensive water plan. We've also seen draft, a draft framework for water-related issues. We've seen draft guidelines for water-related issues. There are some good things in these documents. We haven't seen a 2018 plan. It's a concept at this point. But from the tribe's perspective, these things need to be in the plan and/or development regulations. They need to be enforceable, you know, guidance and draft guidance and ideas of plans in the future. There's nothing to hang on to right now, so you're at this really important point. And I just have to say that certainly the tribe wants to be at the table as the county moves forward on all of this, these efforts, but it's not here today. And today, you're deciding on a comprehensive plan, and I have to reinforce that the comp plan as it stands does not meet state requirements. It doesn't meet the GMA requirements for legal water availability. So, if there's any questions, I'm glad to take them.
I'm curious why, again, you say it doesn't meet that, though. Again, everything I've read doesn't say what you're saying. One thing, the comprehensive plan is the 30,000-foot view of everything that tells us we have to stay within this structure. That's a comprehensive plan. The actual ways of getting there and stuff wouldn't be in the comprehensive plan. Just like we have these other things, these other regulations you like to see us, that we're already doing, you like to see us actually start to initiate and do it. You know, for that, we'd have a briefing, but that's in a different area. That wouldn't be in the comprehensive plan either. So what part do you think is not, or is in violation? Because it doesn't say that the formula is supposed to be in the plan.
I don't know about a formula, but I guess I sort of turn it back with a question is, where in the comprehensive plan is the county matching growth to where water is legally available? That's my understanding that came out of Hearst, is that the county has to match it to that, and...
The comprehensive plan is where they say they will. They will make that. That's what the comprehensive plan is, not, not the formula which to get there. And that's where they have to step forward and put that in the comprehensive plan that says, "We will do that."
I think, though, that, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. The comprehensive plan is the place, we believe, for the county to say, "This is where water resources are available," or if they're not, "This is what's generally going to happen." And it doesn't, it doesn't do that.
Couldn't that change regularly? With stuff that happens, you know, events or new information comes in?
Well, right now, the information that's in, that we've been feeding to the county in piles, is that you have streams throughout the county that the state of Washington recognized way back, I mean, before, starting in the 50s, and then again, as time went on, and culminating in a, in in-stream flows, enclosures that were enacted on these streams. So these streams have limitations as to how they can be impacted, and they have, they have senior water rights. And there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that acknowledges that there's a water availability issue. Ecology's documents for WIRA 14 say water is not available, water is spoken for. There's nothing in, in the plan that acknowledges this issue and then at least sets out from the 70,000-foot level, what's going to happen? How's the county going to deal with that? And because it's silent on that issue, that, that's a defect, especially in the rural element, which requires that these in-stream flows be protected, preserved. It's not happening in the plan. So, does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but you just said the same thing again, though. What you're talking about is, is things that would have to be done in order to get there. By saying, "We will do it," that's what the comprehensive plan is. It is not to look at the individual, in my opinion, but I appreciate your input on that.
Thank you.
Sharon, just a quick question. So, staff had prepared a memorandum of understanding and sent it to the tribe, I believe, back in October. Have you had a chance to review that? Because the way that I've read that MOU, it would have given us an opportunity to work more closely on, on these items and, you know, leading up to the 2018 comprehensive plant, water plan that we are talking about. Is there any, do you have any response to that? Because I haven't heard anything back from, through staff. I'm not sure if staff has heard anything on that, but my office certainly hasn't, and I was just curious as to your thoughts on that kind of a collaboration.
Yes. Thank you for asking, Commissioner. The tribe is very interested in an MOU. We sent a letter yesterday that addresses the draft MOU and kind of where we see it going. The draft MOU is, you know, is a good start. A couple of problems with it doesn't really, it just says we're going to study things. And it also says that the tribe is going to share financially, and the county can offer in-kind services. So, you know, I think what we decided to do was to, to welcome the opportunity for an MOU, but also recognize that even if we entered into one two weeks ago or a month ago, we wouldn't be at a place where there would be, there would be meat on it that, that was equivalent to what's supposed to go into the comp plan and development regs. So, that doesn't mean the tribe doesn't want to work on this MOU, and, you know, you'll be hearing more. I think we just need to continue the dialogue after today, but that's where we are.
You acknowledged it might take us a little bit more time to kind of get to the heart of this and get it figured out. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, but the MOU idea is embraced by the tribe.
Okay. Well, I appreciate hearing that you think that it would take more time for us to get to a solution. Thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
Thank you so much.
Any additional public comment?
So, Constance Ibsen, 6500 East State Route 106 in Union. I realize everybody, everybody here is probably really wanting to talk about the budget. So, let me just first off note that in the critical aquifer recharge areas in the comp plan, so in the fall of 2017, planning library maps appeared on the county website. The current posted critical aquifer recharge area map does not detail the different classifications of aquifer recharge areas. The planning library map does not use best available science nor reflect past decisions by the Western Washington Growth Management Hearings Board. Additionally, on page two of four in the public comment summary and responses, the last paragraph is correct. There has been no sole source drinking water aquifers identified by the State Department of Health, and areas of potential seawater intrusion have not been identified or mapped. The capital facilities plan is inadequate in its projected expenses for county-owned drinking water and sewer wastewater treatment systems. The state auditor's office has expressed concern that the Belfair and Rustlewood wastewater treatment plants will not be able to meet financial obligations. Use of REIT 1, 2, and .09 sales tax monies appear to be over allocated. To me, it appears that all the county taxpayers would continue to subsidize the rates for the Belfair wastewater system and Rustlewood. Though, Belfair current rates are about $96 per equivalent residential units, while the actual costs are approximately $304 each month. With the 2017 change in state law, which states that properties with existing functioning septic systems cannot be required to hook up to sewers, the previously planned Phase Two of the Belfair wastewater system is not financially tenable. Further, the scheme for the Puget Sound Industrial Center to hook up to the Belfair wastewater system is not a perfected instrument, and I am not aware of any documented process for ongoing coordination with the city of Bremerton. There is no funded stormwater utility implementation plans for the Belfair or the Allen UGAs that are listed. The county's previous reluctance to implement impact fees makes it unlikely that these fees would be instituted in the future. If the county continues to proffer developer contributions in its capital facilities plan, the how, when, and over what period of time monies from developers will be available needs to be detailed. I see no systematic mechanism for reassessment if probable funding falls short of meeting the existing needs to ensure the land use element, capital facilities plan, and the financial plan are coordinated and consistent. Transportation. The adopted transportation element states that the top priority is maintenance of existing infrastructure and the roadways. However, the over 1.5 million annual diversion of road tax dollars to the general fund is competing with the building of new county connector roads for the Belfair bypass, tentative completion in 2025. This diversion of dollars imperils also the implementation of best management practices to prevent stormwater pollution from contaminating our waterways. Further, Commissioner's statements asking the Public Works Director if he could cut back on ship seal program to save dollars for building these roads also gives me concern that the maintenance is not going to be the top priority. Parks. Funds are not available for the 25% match for Washington Recreation and Conservation Office. Therefore, the Mason County Parks and Trails Comprehensive Plan, to me, just appears to be a show. Lacking, lack of funding will hinder the development and the submission of grant applications and property acquisitions for open space within and between the UGAs. Public participation. This comprehensive plan update process publicly started in 2015 with instructions from the Mason County Commission to do only, to concentrate on the minimum necessary. There was no systematic review of what worked and did not work in the previous plan or a data analysis. The 2015 Planning Commission meetings on the comprehensive plan were abruptly stopped and restarted one year later in 2016, and then quietly stopped again. In early 2017, the Planning Commission agreed to only consider those elements necessary in the comprehensive plan. Later in the spring of 2017, the county commission directed planning staff to complete the update by the end of 2017 to ensure the county would be eligible for certain grants. With a new planning manager, the process was restarted, with much confusion over what had happened to the previous work. A county commissioner, county planning commission chair, and planning staff repeatedly stated, "Just get this done, and then we can come back and do it right." This was coupled with this constant statement that the county plan could be updated every year. My conclusion of this comprehensive plan update process is captured by John Wooden. If you don't have time to do it right, when will you have time to do it over again? Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Well, if I can get myself back together here, I will be happy to... Mr. Chair, Commissioner Drexler, Commissioner Nethalyn. I have lost the first page of my, of my comments. I will simply start out by, by noting that this has been quite a long process and has taken immense time on the part of the amazing Paula Reeves and Dave Wyndham and Marissa Watson, that, that the Planning Advisory Commission has spent the best part of the year working through the details of this. We only meet three hours a month, but for each one of those hour, for each one of those meetings, each one of us spends about nine hours in preparation. It's, there's a lot of work that has gone into this. And while this is not a perfect document and will never be a perfect document, I am as proud of this as anything that I have ever been a part of, of creating. Unfortunately, one can never please all of the people all of the time. I have heard voices claim that the process has not been transparent. The Open Public Meetings Act, RCW 42 dot 30, is the legal standard for transparency. And after hearing some of these things, I spent part of the last weekend rereading the act, and it is clear that, that not only did we meet every requirement of the Open Public Meetings Act, we went, we far surpassed anything that, that the law requires. Every meeting has been held in public, every item argued, and every decision taken in the public eye. Going above and beyond, Paula and Marissa have spent countless hours answering questions and helping people with the website, helping them through technical language that's not always easy to understand, and working through difficult concepts, trying to impart, impart the goals of this update. They've provided CDs of the complete comp plan, complete red lines, even complete crosswalks. These are internal working documents that, that really, to be meaningful, require a tremendous investment in time to use competently. I've also heard voices claim that there hasn't been enough public participation, and this is one that, over the course of, of this comp plan update, there have been 44, I believe, different public meetings, public outreach coffees. We have tried to include the public in every step of this process. Perhaps the most useful was the, the online survey that we did that had over 70 responses and helped to model how we, how we shaped this to meet the goals and aspirations of, of the people of Mason County. Finally, I've heard a few voices who want to revert to the old comp plan by reinserting the old Chapter Three, or if not that, by somehow appending it to the new comp plan. The comp plan update is a complete, well-ordered, comprehensive document that puts Mason County in full compliance with all of the appropriate laws and statutes. It reflects the goals and aspirations of the vast majority of Masonites for their county. Adding Chapter Three from the last comp plan would be like taking a chapter from Gone with the Wind and sticking it in the middle of To Kill a Mockingbird. It's neither desirable nor reasonable. To do this would be to abandon fact and reason to fear and superstition. The plan we presented is an outstanding piece of work. It isn't perfect, but it is much better than the document it replaces. The aspirations and needs of Masonites will change, the financial realities of Mason County will change, and the comprehensive plan will change with them. We have already begun working on a 2018 work plan, and, and we will, we will work through this, including with, with the tribe. We have great plans for, for a comprehensive water program, and the tribe will certainly be a huge part of that. Voltaire cautioned that the perfect is the enemy of the good, as Chairman Schute noted earlier. The comprehensive plan update that you have is not only good, it is very good. Adopting it meets important public needs. I hope and I think that... I hope and I think that this comp plan deserves to be passed and adopted. Thank you very much.
Any additional comment? Okay, seeing no additional comment, I'll close the public hearing for the updates to the Mason County Comprehensive Plan, 2016 to 2036 Comprehensive Plan Update, and move to Commissioner's discussion and a potential motion.
I'd give right to the motion, I believe, on this, and I think the work has been done. I think it's been excellent work. I appreciate the opinions that so many have had, but I can't help but go back to the very basics of what the purpose of this plan is and what its job is. And I will continue and we will continue to have further conversations about the codes and the structures we use. While we're talking, I went through and was looking, again, I couldn't find a way to even make that fit in there with the format that we're using. I don't just see it as possible, but I, again, there's been a lot of work done here, there's been a lot of other amendments that we've just passed to go in, so I will make a motion for the adoption of the Mason County 2016 to 2036 Comprehensive Plan Update with the previous amendments included.
And I'll second that motion.
So moved and seconded to adopt Mason County 2016 to 2036 Comprehensive Plan Update with the amendments that have been presented. Any additional discussion?
I appreciate this plan a lot in that it has been downsized quite a bit, and the readability has been phenomenal. I can read this thing and not get lost in hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of policies that were already implemented. I appreciate the addition of the Rural Development Section. I think that's really vital, given our community and the emphasis on maintaining rural character. I appreciate the Citizens Guide piece of that, this. I appreciate the table that crosswalks policies to code. I think that it's a more usable plan as presented. I appreciate some of the small changes in the countywide planning policy that acknowledges aquaculture is an important industry in this community, that it is, that as much as we have this vision of maintaining rural character, we need to acknowledge the importance of our urban growth areas or rural activity centers in the countywide planning policy, which wasn't even in there before, frankly. I know that there's, we've had the review of the Department of Ecology, Department of Commerce, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Fish and Wildlife, got their comments, incorporated them when absolutely necessary. Their acknowledgement that this is sufficient has me, the agreement that we've met the letter of the law, and where we didn't, we made those changes. I think that if anybody thinks that we can capture the entire 65,000 people's vision under one plan is unrealistic. There are going to be people that have issues, and we're not going to be able to capture them all. But I think we did a darn good job of getting there, at the very least of understanding what we think our vision is. I appreciate the boldness of this commission, of our planning commission, of our planning staff, that we can continue to do this, look, year after year after year. There was a previous thought that every 10 years is when you touch it, and then you don't touch it again. I've been chomping at the bit to touch this, and there's so much more that I do want to do, but for now, this is absolutely far better product than what we had before. I appreciate the comments of the tribe. I just want to address what you had said. I think that some of the things that you, that the tribe had hoped for, we are not there yet. We do have a ability to, or we have now the procedures outlined about how to ensure water is legally available. I admit that our county has probably dropped the ball on that in the past, but we did not have an understanding, like the Hearst decision clarified, about permit exempt wells and where they stand. That's created a different understanding about what legally available means. I don't think we have enough information that I would say was vetted to be able to draw up a comprehensive plan and say, this is where you have water, this is where you don't. I think that that still needs to happen. I'm not willing to take the few models that have been done. I have a lot of problems with the Johns Creek model. I worked in the WIRA 14 planning when that model was presented, and there were a lot of questions we had then that couldn't be answered, and so I just, I'm not comfortable with the Johns Creek model. And I think the mitigation packages are being worked on, and we can, and we'll have, we'll have a whole cadre of them, hopefully, once we have certainty that they will be legally available to us, to offer to people, to mitigate water usage. I think that the tribe is looking for a more completed product than we have the ability to do at this point, and we do look forward to the opportunity to work with the tribe to build our body of knowledge and have that science vetted. Some of the other comment that was put out there about how we haven't, we've overspent our REIT in our capital facilities plan, we, as a county commission, have budgeted two years' worth. The whole idea that we have to do a capital facilities plan out so far, there's no way to budget that exactly, but we do have it very much restricted to the two, to the two year, this year and the next year. You know, we know what those dollars are and how we're going to adopt them as an annual plan, an annual facilities plan. And then, I'm just going to state one more time, the idea that the whole county is subsidizing the Belfair sewer because we're using .09 in REIT monies, I don't agree. REIT is paid for by people who buy and sell homes. That's not the whole county. .09 is a rebate of state sales tax. These are both funds that have been allocated or have been established by the state legislature for the purpose of paying for water, sewer, and roads. And I will say it one more time, we have the legal availability to use these funds this way, and so I'm sorry if people don't appreciate and like that that's how we're using them. That's what the state legislature said we could do with those monies, and that's what we're doing. The state auditor doesn't like that. Not sure why we disagree on that one, but if the state law says we can use that money for water, sewer, and roads, then gosh darn it, I'm going to use it for water, sewer, and roads. And then I just thank staff, I thank the Planning Commission, I thank all the Planning Commission members before this, I thank the previous staff that isn't there for all the hard work on this, and I do look forward to an annual review to make sure that we are looking at areas that we still want to tone down on or adjust to the changes in our community.
Thank you.
The comments that we've been sharing when it comes to making sure something is in the plan, while we sit here, I was looking at, over some of the different aspects that are similar but different, and wondering how it could be done. For example, the pocket gopher. When you go through the comprehensive plan, you're not going to find a document in there that says why the pocket gopher in particular. You're not going to see a document that says we came up with the issue, that we have an issue for pocket gophers because of this. You're also going to have another issue with what kind of buffers do you have because of the pocket gopher. Well, we're not going to find that in the comprehensive plan either, as well as we're not going to find why we have to have those buffers and what determinations we made by it. I understand we have some things that are in code that we have not been following, we need to work on that. And I know that we, you would like for us to, for the tribes to be able to put some of these things in our comprehensive plan for the water adequacy, but again, I can't find the place. In order for us to be in violation of not following the plan, the first thing we have to do is have it in the plan. And what's happening today, for the first time, is we're putting it in the plan, in the comprehensive plan, that it will be done. Now, after we get it adopted in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan goes through, then we can be held liable for not following the plan. And that's where the weakness is in any county, is being held to the comprehensive plan itself. So now that if it passes here and it gets implemented into there, then you can expect that we have to follow guidelines and stuff in order to get there. But until it gets in, it doesn't exist, in my opinion. Again, I thank you so much for all of your guys' hard work. This was an update, the idea of making sure that it meets basically whatever is necessary is required by law in order to get out there, not everything we might want or like to have included. But people don't realize there's a lot of work in creating things, and there's a lot of work in paring things down to where it's workable for the rest of the public, and we can build upon our future based upon it. With that, I will be, again, speaking in favor of it.
Thank you. I just want to maybe limit my comments to a couple here, and mostly just words of thanks to staff, planning department staff, Marissa, Dave, Paula. Done a great job in helping facilitate this process. Also, to the members of the Planning Commission who are here, Marilyn, James, Aaron, appreciate your work, and as well as the rest of your cohort who's unable to be here today. We're all, I've said this a number of times, we're all Planning Advisory Commission alumni. We know the work that goes into it firsthand. We did a lot of the work. I was on the Planning Commission when this process started a couple of years ago, and it's great to see that it's finally come to fruition, that there's now an opportunity for us to adopt this and move forward. And really, this is one of the things that I think, you know, we try to capture in this process, is that it is a citizen-led, a citizen-driven process, and staff is there to facilitate that conversation, and it doesn't always include every thought or idea that comes forward. I think that's part of the process, and you pick, you know, any item, any policy issue on there, and I think, you know, you'll see that there's a pro and a con to each of those. And so this is making the best of all the ideas that have come forward. Is there room for process improvement? Absolutely. Everything we do, you know, we'll have an opportunity here to look back and say, where can we improve? Where can we do better? And so we'll certainly be taking that into consideration as we move forward with developing a 2018 work plan, and I know that staff is eager to do that. This is a plan that, in a lot of ways, streamlined what we already had, and eliminated redundant and duplicative policies, and so really cut down on, you know, the amount of information that's in the plan in a way that streamlines it, makes it more user-friendly, which is critical, I think. And, you know, it's, we've found a way to allow more people to be engaged in the process, and I know there's room to improve and build on that. And so certainly congratulate you on a job well done here and look forward to your work in 2018 and beyond. So with that, we have a motion and a second on the table, and with that, I would call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.